Um, alright, so our first item is approval of voucher. So we got that um by email and I think everybody got around to signing it yesterday. So that should be all set.
Um, Amy, uh, do you, do you want me to hold or the, I know there was some questions on the process. Do you want to wait or do you want me to address any, any of those that, what would you like to do?
Yes, would, would Carrie or Darlene like to have some, do you have questions about the voucher?
And all my questions were answered yesterday.
Okay, alright, I just want to reinforce that anytime you have a question, don't hesitate to text or call. You don't have to wait for a meeting. Um, and sometimes when you're seeing things, again, just to reiterate, the, the purpose of the electronic process is not at all to circumvent checks and balances, it's actually meant to expedite it. Um, the reason we do it electronically is so that we don't have to wait each month. It's the same process, the board members see the same information. Um, and what that allows us to do is get our bills paid in a timely manner. So we don't have a delay, any late fees or anything of that nature. Um, if the, we, we process all of our vouchers through all the 11 budgets that we oversee that way. Um, if, I, I think if the board's comfortable with that, we can continue to send it out that way. Make sure that we're available if you have any questions, but certainly the voucher is always available. Any of the information for public or we can provide backup. So I just want to make sure that the, the system is working for you all. So, uh, it, and it can, questions can either come to me, they can come to Haley, Nancy Thurlow. Uh, and then that Dow is the person in the office that processes all the invoices for all the budgets. So if there's ever any questions, let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, the next item is the approval of the minutes from June 5th.
Yeah, and those are attached to the agenda.
Mm-hmm. Did you guys have a chance to look them over? Darlene, I know you weren't there. Um, Carrie, would you um, want to move to approve them?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 5th as written.
Okay. Um, I'll second that, okay, since I was there too. Um, all in favor, uh, Carrie?
Aye.
Darlene?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Great, thank you. So the next item is a public comment. So-
I, I'm not aware of any from our office. Um, and again, if we do receive any in our office, we'll share that with you and report it out in the minutes. But um, I, I don't have anything that was received at, at our office.
Okay, so I will consider the ones that um, that Carrie presented to us as public comments. Um, and-
I did include Mark in that email, so I don't know if I have the wrong email.
And a lot of them have to do with Longfellow. Like, there, the first one was about the painting and then, and then, so I don't know. Do we want to talk about Longfellow on the agenda or do we want to just talk about it now?
Well, can, can I, uh-
Go ahead, Mark.
One thing, it's really encouraged that people are, are watching and, and interacting. So we want to encourage public comment. I just want to reiterate that public comments should come through my office. Uh, if, if at all possible, it's not to say that they can't contact board members. But when you get it, please share it with Selena so we can ensure it's included in, in the minutes of record. Uh, the other piece, I just wanted to say if it's, if it's issues regarding maintenance of the building or the grounds or something of that nature, it's really important that Haley and I get that so that we can um, jump right on it. It may not necessarily rise to the level of public comment as much as it's taken care of, of property, which is what we spend uh, a lot of focus on and we have a caretaker. So I just wanted to put that out there that folks could, are, are encouraged and, and should uh, call well, either Haley or myself, if it's day-to-day operational things. If it's things that, that have to do with policy or procedure or certainly oversight of the principal or superintendent, absolutely should go to the board. So, but it's not to say that it can't go through the board to us. It's, it's easier if we can get to that information first, it expedites the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, so our next discussion item is reports and updates. Um, so we can just talk about Longfellow there or we can wait, uh, put it on discussion items.
Yeah, and that, and Amy, I didn't want to sidestep, I mean, Carrie, if there's some things that you received that are necessarily a public comment, please, you know, want to make sure you share them. But if they're, if they're day-to-day or operational things of the building, please send them our way and we'll follow up with the individual. Um, thank you.
Okay. Um, so did the, did the um, painting, did we do, do we think that the painting needs to be done on the, on the Longfellow? Or did it look like it was, there's just some seams that need to be filled?
I scoured those photographs, I even, I'm gonna, it's gonna sound foolish, I'm gonna make my sound, myself sound silly, but I even took out a magnifying glass. I was trying to find where, and I could not locate it. And then I talked to Haley, she couldn't locate it. So I don't know if it's a painting issue. Um, you, so what Haley and I talked about doing is, you know, having, having Ingrid uh, contact the caretaker and just do a real uh, spot-on inspection of if, is there anything to compromise? So Haley, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Um, but we're certainly paying close attention to both of our buildings.
Okay, okay, good.
As part of, say too, as part of the process for school reopening, um, we're gonna, you know, we, we conduct regular checks of the building, uh, but prior to occupancy, we're gonna be going through uh, the building and making sure that everything is up to standard.
Okay, great. Um, do uh, what about the, there was questions about the bathroom. So is that something that should be handled directly? Haley, do you want to talk to Ingrid about COVID and, and policies and bathroom? And then we can just update the concerned community member? Cause I mean, it's such a tricky subject matter and we don't, I think addressing it here is, is kind of uh, a waste of our time, really.
Yeah, um, so I, I would just say to that, if I may, Amy, we're working, I think the board knows, I want the community to know, we're working on a safe return to school advisory group that is dealing with protocols from federal levels to state levels. We're looking at all of our facilities and schools. Uh, right now, again, our, our schools remain closed, but we are working towards August and seeing what those possibilities would be. Um, when I say the buildings are, are, are closed, um, we do have staff coming and going that are um, allowed in on a case-by-case basis with approval from the principal. But um, certainly with bathrooms, we've had limited custodial support. So even in those situations, we, we, we should be really, really careful. What I will tell you is that we haven't received any guidelines or I'm not aware of any, rather, that, that say you can't use bathrooms, but people need to be aware that they're not presently being cleaned between each use by us. I think, you know, folks need to know that. Um, so that, we'll have more information um, on that. I also wanted to say that I know there's a lot of folks that have questions about safe return to school. So if the board's ready before we're done, I can give you an update on that as well.
Okay, safe return. Okay, um, what about a lift update? Do we, uh, Mark, oh, wait a minute, Carrie's got her hand up. Carrie?
Oh, my, mine is just very specifically that the concerned community member was not worried about schools off island. They were just worried very specifically about the Longfellow building and the fact that it is attached to a public library that did not close-
Right.
Um, during the, during the beginning here, beginning part of COVID. And is that building locked off so that people cannot use the bathroom in a public bathroom setting? Because it technically is inside the school and the school should be locked. So there was, there was question if people were going into it. And that, that's just what the question is. It's not about, I mean, the reality is, is that bathroom situations are different from each facility to each facility. But this one is a very specific one where Longfellow technically is not enrolled at the moment. So the building should be secure and locked. Is the library using the bathroom?
So I would say-
And what was the cleaning procedure?
I would say uh, this situation is not unique to our schools. Uh, in other areas, we have a school where we share a community center or community center inside of one of our schools, similar situation. Um, first of all, yes, school is secured and it's off limits. However, we gotta realize that although the school is under the oversight of the school committee, that there is a library in there. And if the town or the entity that oversees the library has determined that the library is open, the library is open. I think what I would suggest to you at this time, without students or staff in school, if folks are gonna use that restroom, it's at their own risk. Um, and there should be a disclaimer posted by the entity that's overseeing the library, not the school. The town or the library just saying, hey, you know, use, use the bathrooms at your own risk. Or, or secure the bathrooms until further notice and we have regular occupancy. Um, unless the school committee directs otherwise, we have not elevated our cleaning protocols. And I'm not aware that we're required to be maintaining that when we're not in session for, for students or, or staff. So we want to be team players, whatever the board thinks is most appropriate. Um, you know, I, I, I respect the fact that the library is open. It's, it's a good service for the community. But folks need to realize that just like in other entities, that's how we're, we're presently handling it. Um, but well, if we need to make other accommodations, we'll, we'll, we'll work with uh, whomever to do that. Haley, I don't know if you have anything to add or disagree with that?
Uh, no, my understanding is that the school buildings are closed and locked and nothing had been reported or asked of me to date. So um, I'm happy to, you know, speak with our caretaker and just confirm that or find out if something else is happening.
I, I will say if there's going to be an expectation that the bathrooms remain open, which is fine, and that they're gonna be used regularly, then that may require or should require some elevated cleaning. And if that's the case, there're gonna be costs for that. And if it's to provide access, however the school committee would like to handle it, I just want to be aware that it might require more attention or more frequency.
Um, I, I dropped out for part of that discussion, but I, I think this kind of ties into the library and school relationship and what the percentage is of, um, what the percentages of shared space and what the agreement is. And maybe we should, since the bathroom's not open for the school, it's open for the library, they should know. Okay, so Carrie's got her hand up, maybe, I mean, just figure out percentages.
I don't know if the bathroom is open. The school is locked. So therefore, since the bathroom is clearly on the school's side, then in essence, it should be locked. I don't know that the librarian or community members are just walking into the building. The concerned community member came to me and said, is it being used? And is it being cleaned? Because on Great Cranberry, there is a unique situation where there are two public bathrooms. The ladies aid has their public bathroom open and they are allowing people to use that. There is also a bathroom down on the town dock area that is being used and is cleaned. So the reality is, is that there's nobody on Great Cranberry that needs to use the school bathroom. The school should be locked because nobody's enrolled there at the moment. But the community member wanted to know, is for some reason, people being allowed to go in there? And if so, is the bathroom being cleaned? And I think the, the answer is kind of a simple one, the building should be locked, people shouldn't be using it. And-
That's, that's correct, unless-
That's, it's, people, random people shouldn't be walking in there because that also breaks the, the security of the school. We, we don't need to have random people walking through the school just to use the bathroom. So I think, I think the person is concerned because they just want to make sure that safety procedures are happening. Cause over on Islesford, there's a different feel. The public bathroom is locked up, um, that's at the neighborhood house. So there's just, there's just a different vibe. And so the, I think the person was just concerned that is the bathroom open? Are people allowed? And my understanding is that the school is locked, so it's not open for public use.
That's my understanding as well, and that's the guidelines we've been operating in every single school across our district. Uh, that is consistent with what we've been doing since March 13th.
Okay. Is um, is it appropriate to follow up, for somebody to follow up with Ingrid and just make sure that that's the procedure?
Yes, I, I can definitely do that. And um, she's been, can you, um, included in all communications from Ian Braun, who's been heading like building safety and cleaning protocols. And I know, sorry, one second.
Okay.
She's um, yeah, so she's been in the loop with all district um, policies, procedures, as has Katia on Islesford. So to my knowledge, they're, you know, complying with all of those directives. And I think, and I will, you know, confirm that.
Okay.
Get your hands going, Haley.
Yes. Okay, so um, and, okay, so we, we talked about the lift last time, but Darlene wasn't here. Um, do, Mark, do you have any update on the lift?
Um, well, you guys have um, eyes on closer than me, but I know there was some concern about the dumpster. We've addressed that. It's a, it's a, I'll just say, it's unfortunate that, you know, we're seeing some outside uh, drops. I hope people aren't confused, that's not, that, you know, if they are, I just want to reiterate, that's not a public dumpster, i- it's a construction dumpster. And if anybody is depositing things that don't belong there, number one, it's, they, they shouldn't be doing that. Number two, it, it presents a health and safety hazard to the residents of the island if, because that's not regularly attended to. So we would just ask people to respect that, number one. And with a contractor's working, have it removed as soon as possible. Um, I did have a conversation with the contractor, I provided the board an update. And I'll just say wrapping that project up is imminent. Um, we're just, you know, tying up some loose ends and it, it really requires um, transportation to and from the island with getting things that the contractors may need out there or off-site. Um, I don't know if you have any questions, but as soon as we're a hundred percent ready to go, um, Spencer Simms at Holyoke Builders and Main Accessibility Corp., I'm going to be following up with them with a, a final inspection or dry run, if you will. And um, that's all I have at this time, unless you have questions. But I'm not aware of any uh, delays outside of the, the COVID and the, the transportation issue. And everything seems to be going along really well. I don't have any other information unless you have specific questions or Haley has anything.
What did we say, it would be installed by, did we have a day, a dead, kind of like a timeframe?
I think, I, I'll have to go back and look at the contract, I don't have that in front of me. Um, I know that I pressed them to say, look, you know, we've got to be ready to go. My hard deadline to them was we gotta be ready to go by August of this, you know, coming year because that school's gonna need to be occupied and so on, so forth. So I have no reason to believe we're not gonna meet that timeline, uh, be, to be ready. Um, and I'll follow up with Spencer again to say, hey, when can I come out, do a dry run? Or what, what does that look like or final walkthrough?
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, so any other up, we did, um, I think that's it for updates?
Um, just to let you guys know about safe return to schools.
Okay.
Uh, that we've got a, a, a large task force group working comprised of teachers, administrators, um, um, parents, students. So we're, we're, we're looking at how we can safely return to our schools. And I would just say that on March 13th, when we closed all our schools, we did it unilaterally across the district. The reopening of our schools may look different. Um, and because of density of communities, I mean, certainly the Cranberry Isles are, are different than um, Brenton, uh, Frenchborough is different than the high school. So we're gonna have to look at those differences. But the protocols that we're developing across the district, um, the, the lens we're looking through is what's, what's the best way to ensure the safety of our students and our staff? And I just wanna-
Mark, excuse me, uh, Darlene, we're getting a lot of uh, back noise, I don't know if that might be you?
Why is it closed?
Oh. Mine's freezing a lot too.
Yeah, you might have an internet connection, but-
Okay, she muted it though, so go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, so I, I want folks to know that we're, we're starting to get a lot of questions about the reopening of schools. And two things people need to be mindful of. Number one, the reopening, you know, no matter where people are at on the side of the question of whether to reopen or not reopen, I don't look at it as a political thing. It's, it's a safety thing, we look at data and science. But at the end of the day, public schools are different than businesses, they just are. And people say, well, well, why is that the case? Because you can make a choice to go to the post office, you can make a choice to go to the bank or business. Some would argue that grocery stores are, are necessary, essential. Sure, I get that. But schools, there's no middle ground. Public education is compulsory, students are required to go. We have a very different standard and, if you will, a higher standard that we have to meet. So that's why we have to make sure that we're very, very careful about making sure that we don't place anybody in harm's way. And we've got some great people working on that. And I'll continue to update the board and the community. We had our first meeting last week. Um, I've pretty much given you an overview of, of, of the work that we're doing. And it goes from teaching and learning right down to the, the public health, bathroom cleanliness and all of those protocols. Um, we literally only have, I literally only have about five weeks to pull this together before I have to make some recommendations. So the timeline's aggressive, we're meeting through the summer. And as information becomes available, um, we'll share it with the public, certainly with the board. And um, I just can't thank the people enough that are uh, doing that work uh, for all of our schools. Um, Amy, that's all I have on that, unless the board has questions about how we're planning to reopen schools or what that might look like.
Um, I think that addresses it pretty well, Mark. I know we're, you guys are working hard at it and it's a-
Thank you.
It's an ever-changing issue.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I mean, one thing to think about when we make that plan is um, if another entity were to come in and use our buildings, what's the plan for that? And I know it happens off-island too, so. Um, alright, great. So I'm ready to move on to the discussion items. Um, and the first one was the transportation issue, if I'm correct? Yes, transportation. So we were gonna talk about um, you know, boating and getting our kids to and from school this coming year. Um, it's a, it's an, again, it's an ever-changing issue. What do we, how do we keep our kids safe on the, you know, is it safe to ride the mailboat? I mean, there's been discussion, or the idea has come up of, you know, using that transportation funds for um, a, a separate boat. And um, I don't know. What do we, let's talk about it. Does anybody want to? Say how they feel about it? It's tricky. Carrie?
I can start, I mean, I can definitely throw my hat into the ring and say that I, I think this is really, um, I don't want to say it's a unique situation because if you look at inner cities or you look at places where there's public transportation that children need to ride to get to their schools, subways, um, buses, we're, we're kind of the same thing. I mean, we're putting our children on, on a public transportation with people that we don't know. Um, we know, we know the captain and crew, but there could be other people um, on the boat. And then the, you know, there is a good possibility going forth into the fall that masks will still have to be one of the tools that people use to help keep themselves safe. So I have reservation that children will be able to self-monitor. We're in a kind of a unique year where we're going to Great Cranberry. So in essence, maybe our children necessarily won't be riding the ferry with people they don't know because they'll be going to the return trip to Cranberry. So it might be a safer situation because it might be just the, the crew and some people leaving from Islesford. But um, you know, I, I think specifically of my, my 10-year-old son Wyatt, who is infamous for falling down, being silly, um, you know, wearing a mask from the time he has to leave home until he has to come home, possibly, you know, four, 4:30 in the afternoon. I have reservation that, that he is gonna be successful at it. Um, and, and I worry about the younger kids. I, you know, I know that the boats are doing the best that they can do, but they are not, they can't police people. They can't be out there telling the kids to put their masks on, they can't keep the kids out of each other's face. And even, even our boat monitor can only do so much. She cannot sit there and um, I don't want to say police the children, but she, I mean, she, she's gonna have her hands full. Um, so, you know, and, and then that's just the sanitation practices where the children will have to wash their hands. Make sure, you know, during cold and flu season, are they gonna be touching their faces? Are they gonna be sneezing on each other? So it's, I, I, I do, I do worry and I, and I wish that I could turn that off. But I, I not only think about the children riding the boat, but I think about the adults that I'm gonna put kids near in the event that one of the kids is sick and then, and the parents get nervous or people get nervous. Um, so it's, it's, I think this is, I think this is the way of the pandemic, is that this is a double-edged sword. I am one of the biggest supporters of my children going to Great Cranberry because I think it helps them understand that they come from a community of islands. So I am all for my kids going there. But it's how do I support it in a safe manner, knowing that the kids can be successful at it? Because I don't want the kids to get on the boat and someone's mask falls off and then someone else is, you know, teasing them and then something else happens and it becomes this weird snowball effect. And, and I do think of the boat crews, I do think of the, you know, how are they gonna facilitate things? I, I am curious what it would look like to have just, I mean, we've taught, we have, we have beat this horse down talking about a school boat. But what if we had something that was just for the school staff, children? I mean, cause that, the other piece is, we're gonna be asking staff to come from off-island. So we're gonna be bringing people from off-island, asking them to travel, get on a boat. I just, I just, I'm, I'm just, my brain is curious what school boat transportation looks like now versus what we've looked at in the past. And my, my other curiosity is how do we help the children navigate this time safely? When, when they're gonna be with just a boat monitor? And how do we be to help them be successful at it and keep them safe? Does that make sense?
Okay.
Isaiah says no.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Um, so the idea of, um, Darlene, did you wanna, did you want to say something? Or did you want me to kind of go over what I, go ahead?
I was trying to listen to all you guys first, especially since I missed the um, last meeting. So um, so I, I have a question, I guess for Mark. In the event that face masks are still required, is it likely that our schools will return even with the face mask policy?
Well, that's, it's a, it's a, it's a loaded question, Darlene, I'm gonna try to answer it this way. Um, well, it's hard for me to give an, an answer to that question right now because the information might change tomorrow. So I just want to put that out there.
Right.
Um, I can, there could be various combinations from the full-on remote, um, excuse me, the method of instruction and teaching we were had before March 13th, that's what we're all hoping to return to. Um, I, I think right now, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainties. We don't know what summer's gonna bring us and whether or not we're gonna see a wave increase or not, which could impact. At the end of the day, I can't really tell you whether masks are, are not going to be required. My sense is that we're probably going to need to make sure that we do something, whether it's a mask, a face shield, or some sort of a barrier until we know that either through a test that people are negative for the, the virus or that they're not going to expose others. or that they're not going to expose others. The other thing I want to say about masks, too, and I think people know this, the masks are to protect others. It's not to protect ourselves. And so in essence, it's, if, it's something that if we're going to do, and this is just an observation, we all need to be doing it the same way and do it well. I think with regard to your, Cranberry's unique. And so with the boat transportation, whether or not you have a special boat or you're providing, it's not like a school bus, right? Where we provide the bus, we wipe it down, we, all of those things are a little bit different when we're with an entity that has the public transportation. You know that. What I would say is this. If we determine these are the protocols to safely transport our students on buses, there's going to have to be a layer of expectation for our students and our staff in terms of if they're using that transportation to and from school. And the reason for that is, is because we need to make sure that the people that are coming and going to our schools are safe and, and have no potential exposure. So I think, I think what I'd say, Darlene, is I can envision that there's a strong possibility we'll be requiring masks. But there's going to be, there's, there's going to be all sorts of variables to that. And I don't know if there's going to be waivers or disclaimers, but we're just not at that place yet. It's really hard. The only thing that's good about this right now is we've got a few weeks to try to figure this out. And we're in this, I, I also want you folks to know, we're not operating in a vacuum. So that, you know, island schools throughout the state or in other places, we're looking at, at, we're looking at information literally from all over the world in terms of how to safely return to schools. So it's, it's hard for me to give you that answer, Darlene. And I don't want to be evasive. I, I just don't know it this time.
Right. I was just thinking that if face masks are going to be required, it would be required on a special boat or on the mailboat, either one.
The answer to that question is absolutely yes. Whatever we do for one, we're going to do for the other. And, and we're not, we're going to have, you know, if you think about this, too, the boats, I don't envision what we ask our students and staff to do on boats is going to look any different than what we would do on school buses. Or if we were taking, if we were taking a field trip, let's say our kids were going to, I don't know, somewhere, a field trip somewhere, they would be expected if they're using transportation provided by us to follow those same protocols. That, it just popped into my head. Haley had to deal with this right away. When we were first coming and there was a question about life jackets and, you know, some children, do I, do I want to wear it or not? No, that's something that you, you're coming to and from school and, you know, the board and, and Haley did a nice job navigating that. And so I would see the same way we handle the life jacket piece, the same way we're going to handle masks or work with our students and, and parents. Haley, do you, would you agree with that, the same way to navigate that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, we kind of determined if students are on the school boat ticket, that they would need to follow the procedures and the rules and expectations of the boat monitor and, you know, the captain and so forth. So that makes absolute sense to me.
And I would just say, too, before, before we even begin to think about the return to school, we would present all this information to the school committee, to parents. I mean, it's not like we're going to just lay this out overnight and we've got to work with people and give them the opportunity to process, ask questions. You know, there might be something that we haven't thought of that, that the community or parents or you, or you guys would. So this is not by any stretch of the imagination going to be a closed door, top-down. We're not going to listen. We want to work with all people. And that's why our, our task force includes so many different people so we can look at all those variables.
So when it comes to, I mean, should we, I guess we spend a large amount of money on, on boating back and forth. And the question is, do we, you know, are we comfortable doing what we did, what we have been doing? Sending the kids on the mailboat? Or do we want to contract a separate boat to bring them over to Cranberry for school? And there's, I think there's seven children who would be commuting. Maybe, I'm not sure the exact numbers. And there's three kids on Great Cranberry. And I know there's a large price difference between a boat that would run through six, up to six people and a boat that would run more than six people. So that's one thing to consider with the boating and hiring a special boat. Is that difference? And, you know, I, we have decided to go back to Cranberry. That was our decision. But, you know, in the interest of financing and depending on what kind of bids that come back in, we may want to, you know, keep our, keep an open mind about that. And if it makes more sense financially, you know, what are we going to do? I mean, what options do we want to have available and on the table? And do we want to consider another semester at Islesford? I don't know, but we might want to be open to, you know, keeping in mind the finances and the safety and the boating and the numbers. There's a lot to, there's a lot of specifics to talk about. And, you know, I don't know that waiting for a safety return plan from the, from the whole AOS is, you know, maybe we, do we start investigating this whole school boat idea now? And so Darlene put her hand up and Haley's got her hand up. So Darlene, do you want to go first?
Sure. So when we first started discussing this, it was, it was in, in, in concern of the COVID and a special boat and things like that. Now I'm hearing that maybe we want to consider possibly remaining at Islesford due to financial reasons because there's more students on Islesford. If we go back to that way of thinking, then we've not gained any ground by having reopened the school on Great Cranberry. I don't think we should use that at all in our decision to remain at Islesford or go to Great Cranberry. I, I, I think that would be, I think that would, that's just going back.
Absolutely. I hear you, Darlene. Thank you. What did you have, Haley?
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, I'd be happy to kind of put together another matrix of options. You know, quotes, costs, scenarios in some sort of grid, you know, to share out if that would be helpful. Kind of depending on what everyone wants to look at as options.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
So I think my hat in the ring is totally different than anyone else's because to me, if, first of all, I have no problem sending my kid to Great Cranberry. My issue comes down to that I don't think my child will be able to wear a mask all day long. And I think it's ridiculous to think that a child will be able to. So in my mind, there's only two options. And it's either we do send the kids over to Great Cranberry and they do the schooling and the whole staff is there and we make it work. And we figure out the safest way to make it work. Or we remote learn. And I think we might find parents that are not 100% comfortable with sending their kids just because there is a lot of uncertainty. So for me, it's like, do I want to send my kid to school? Because if I send my kid to Islesford, my kid still has to wear a mask. It's not like we get out of, it's like a get out of jail free card. There's still that factor to me about safety, whether they're going to Great Cranberry, Timbuktu, Istanbul, or Islesford. It comes down to, is it logically makes sense to ask a child to sit and, and wear a shield, a mask, have a barrier? We, we always talk about the reason homeschooling is, is horrible is because kids don't get to socialize. But yet we're going to put our kids back into a school system and we're going to have barriers up, which is going to confuse kids. So I think, I think unfortunately, I think this is, like Mark said, this is a very difficult, hard, multi-layered problem that is not easily solved with just a, a Band-Aid. I think that going into the fall, it will be interesting to see what schools are doing. It will be interesting to see models that are in place and, and what works for schools and what doesn't. As a, as a mom of two kids, I'm not 100% that if school starts up on time, that I'm sending my kids. But that's me personally, just because I think I have children that it's unrealistic to ask them to do something that I know adults can't do. So if we're, you know, it's just, I, I do think this is a multi-layered, difficult, probably one of the most difficult discussions that we're ever going to have and keep having because there's not an answer for it. It's, we've got to do what's best for the group of kids, not, not just certain kids. And we've got to make sure that we, we keep, what's the phrase, Mark, that we have to keep? It's the, what's the whole point of the school board? It's to keep the, it's not about, it's not about the community, it's about the kids and their education.
Your constituents are the students. Ensuring that you put the needs of students first in all considerations.
So I, I mean, I think, I think we have to keep maybe saying that phrase to ourself. And, you know, having staff that primarily will be coming from off-island, having, you know, I, I think, I think it's a much bigger conversation than even one meeting can begin to hold. And it's, you know, unfortunately, it's a loaded one because a lot of people want to use the Islesford versus Great Cranberry thing. And it's, it sucks. It sucks because we are one town. We are one community, even though we live in separate islands. And so it's, it definitely comes down to, what are we asking the children to do? And is it safe? And is it going to help? Like, are we just putting them back into the school because we just want to put them back into the school? And, 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 you know, what are the barriers going to look like if there's going to be barriers? So, and I don't know, this is hard. It's hard. I, I know right now the three of us are probably not on the same page. We're probably all on different pages. And that's great because this is where healthy discussion comes from. And this is where we, we take time to listen to each other and we try to hear what each other's saying because we all come from a different point of view. All right, I'm going to shut up now before I start crying.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. So does it, how long does it take to put out a bid for a school boat and get, get responses? I mean, there's really only a few companies that would probably be able to respond. And do we respect that they would need the summer to kind of come up with that and to be ready to commit to that? So do we, should we go forward and ask for bids for a separate school boat at this time?
I don't think you get hurt by asking for bids, Amy. You know, I, I mean, if, and you talked about a timeframe. If you're going to do this and evaluate it, I think it should go out sooner rather than later. And again, just because you, you go out doesn't mean that you, you have to move forward with it. So it's not going to hurt you to, to have the information. But if, if you're doing this with the purpose of trying to have something in place for August, September, I think the time to move forward is now to procure the information. And I would say at a minimum, you need at least two weeks. That, that would be a minimum. And three or four weeks would certainly be preferred, but that's.
Darlene?
A few months ago, at one of our meetings back when we were still in person, it seems like we were, we looked into not bids, but we're just kind of getting fillers of who might be interested. Or if there was anyone out there, but maybe we didn't. I know this is a discussion that's came up several times, so I agree that it wouldn't hurt to just look into it and see what our options are. And it would also help with, once we are back on regular schedule in hopes that sometime during the school year we will be, then we won't have the problem with the, with the boat schedule and the kids being released early and then later and things like that because we would have the special boat. So everybody could be dismissed at the same time.
Well, it seems like if we did ask for a bid, it would probably be for the entire school year. But, I mean, I would think. And Haley, have you looked into, have you talked to some of the companies? And, you know, how, what do you, do you think we need to, like, make up something to ask for bids on? Do we have like a proposal of what we are looking for?
I think we should craft a proposal. I've done a little, you know, destination, testing the water, so to speak. And I think there's, I think there's possible out there for sure. And yeah, I think we would have to set up in the proposal, we would have to set up what we were looking for. The runs, the times, the numbers. So I could kind of work with Mark on that just to make sure, or, you know, whoever, basically, because like we've talked about, if we're going to, we should, we cover transportation K-12, so we would want to include, you know, all the students under our umbrella, I would think.
And I guess probably reaching out to the parents. I mean, at what time do we, I guess Haley can probably figure out that, when, when's the right time to reach out to the parents? As far as, you know, everybody's, you know, how they feel about sending their kid on a boat. I mean, I just, in conversations I've had with just, you know, friends and community members, I don't think that they're all necessarily on board with commuting their kid. So it might make a change in our numbers that way, too, which, I mean, and my hope would be that everybody gets to come to school and do, you know, what we always do. But it's, it's, it's strange times. Darlene, you had your hand up?
I, I think this is something that anyone can feel comfortable with. It's, it's a pandemic. It's our first experience with one. So I don't think there's a comfort level for anyone. And, and so I think that's where each family, I think we've got to, I think we have to, as a school board, overseeing two schools in one town, have to continue with, with what, what, with what we need to do. We, each person's going to be uncomfortable. I'm, I would be uncomfortable. People from Islesford is going to be uncomfortable. People sending their kids to school after a school shooting are uncomfortable. I mean, there's always uncomfortable elements. But yet the, the, the process must go on. And I guess that's what I'm saying. And we just need to do it to the, the best of our ability to make certain it is the safest for everyone that's involved.
I totally agree. Great. Thank you. So Haley had her hand up and then Carrie.
I just wanted to say, completely agree with Darlene. I've met with almost all the parents during our end-of-year conversations. And there is a huge range of comfort level, you know, just about next year in general. And so I just totally agree. I think what people want more than anything, which, you know, I've said that we just really won't have until August, is just an understanding of what the plan is. And then we're just going to have to respect parents' decisions once they have all the information. And there's so many uncertainties right now. Yeah, that I feel the best thing we can do is like develop our plan, communicate that to the parents fully. And then they'll be able to make the best decision, like for them and their families.
And I, I'd just like to say, too, things are going to change as information becomes available. And through this, we're going to continue to listen to parents, to the community. And if people have questions, please contact us. We don't want them to, to worry. A lot of what we're doing right now, we just don't have concrete answers to give people because we're still vetting things. But there's no way people aren't going to see plans, procedures, or things in place before we consider bringing students and staff back. Absolutely. We, we wouldn't do that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want my children going to school if I didn't know what was going on. So we understand that.
So Carrie, you had your hand up?
I completely agree with what everyone is saying. I think, I think that there are so many factors that it's so hard to have just a quick, like, this is what we're doing. And as me, as personally as a mom, no matter where the school is, I'm going to have trouble sending my kid. But the reality is, as a school board member, we made a commitment to the community, we made a commitment to the children. And when I'm, when I'm thinking about that, it, my, my mind shifts to, you know, what is, you know, I, I think it's important to have, to find out as much information as we can because that's the only way we can make a good decision. Like finding out if a private boat is the way to go. Or maybe it's, you know, not an issue because, you know, maybe it's not cost-effective. So we've got to keep going with the. So we've got to keep going with the ferry and then just setting up boundaries. And I think that, I think each family will do what's comfortable in their own homes. But as, you know, just keeping in mind that it's not just about me and my family. This is about several families and a community. And, um, you know, that, that, like Darlene said, everyone is struggling with this. Everyone wants certainty in an uncertain time and we can't give that to anyone. We can't, you know, we're not, as individuals, we're not even on the same page about stuff.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay. So we wouldn't need to hammer out any details of a bid right now, right? That would be something that we would have, ask Haley to work on and then we would, people would see it. I mean, Mark would weigh in.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, um, Nancy Thurlow literally handles, you know, hundreds of these. So we can work with Nancy and I'm sure we have records that when, when we went out to bid previously in this area. So yeah, that wouldn't be hard to put together. We can move forward with that. And then again, all we're doing is we're asking for information. We're not taking any action. We wouldn't do that without the school committee's approval.
Okay. All right. So do, we don't need to vote on that, Mark?
No, you, you, no, what you can do is, if, if, if it's the wish of the school committee, you can direct administration to, to, to get a bid. And that's just, all we're doing is we're getting information for you. You don't need to vote on that. I mean, you can vote if you'd like, but it's not necessary. If you take action on a bid, yes, you, you would need to vote on that.
Okay. All right. But in general, is that what we want to do? You guys want to see some more information about a school, specific school boat? And Carrie, you've had your hand up?
Yes. I mean, I want to see, I do want to see information about a specific school boat. But I just was thinking to myself that I don't want to dismiss the idea of what, what the model might look like with both schools being open and running. It's not, I mean, unfortunately, because there's such an age group discrepancy. I mean, how, I think us having the answers to be able to answer those questions, because people are going to say, well, why don't you just open both schools? What does it look like for teaching? What does it look like for aid? What does it look like? I, I think, I think it would be in our best interest to have just a, because Lord knows Haley needs more to do, but just what that model might look like. Cause that, I mean, having all the pieces in front of us, if we are just going to discuss a school private boat, then we're not, we're not addressing all of the concerns that might be had by families. So maybe just, like I said before, this might be, this is not something that we can easily discuss in just one meeting probably. But like knowing that one of our options is we send the kids to Great Cranberry from Ilesford. Second option and have the staff come from off island. Second option is we have a private boat to get the kids to Great Cranberry. Third option is, you know, uh, remote learning. Fourth option is we open up both schools and what does staffing look like? I, I mean, I don't, it's going to be more work, but then, but then it's, it shows people that we really are looking at all the options.
I think, if I might suggest the following, um, I think the school committee talked about that. You know, normally the school committee recesses in the summer. This pandemic, as Darlene said, it's different for all of us. And I envision we're going to be meeting through the summer, providing regular updates to you and the community. If we can go out, get the information on a special boat. And then certainly a couple of weeks from now, we're going to have more information for you to consider or when we have our next meeting. So, um, you know, I, I think a combination of going out, getting the information, the work of the task force, and then all those considerations as we get closer by our next meeting, we'll have some more information for people.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Um, oh, Darlene, you have your hand up?
It, yes. Uh, so as we're getting the bids for the possible special, um, school boat, it could Haley also look into what the cost and what it would look like if both schools were open? Just so that we can compare the difference and the, the financial difference and really process that?
We can do that, Darlene. I just want to make sure folks are aware. It'll be a, it'll be a ballpark only because we're going to have to approximate fuel costs. We're gonna, you know, I mean, again, I want to remind the school committee, you've budgeted for one building. So this could have some, some, or it would have some impact, but, uh, it won't be to the penny. We're gonna, but we're going to be able to give you a really good, good indication of what that would look like. And, uh, you know, we can, we can pull that work together.
Right. I, I, I'm sorry. I just want to make certain that if we, i- if in the event that both schools open is considered, that, um, that there are, that no, neither school would be left without the same opportunities. So I would want the same teachers that are, the same specials that Ilesford has to be also at Great Cranberry. So I wouldn't want it to be, I mean, even if they had to go week by week, I would not want one school to have something the other one didn't.
And again, that I agree, Darlene. Again, those things, if the expectations were, and, and we should, there's going to be some increasing costs in those areas and that's what we have to look at. Yeah.
And, yeah. And personally, I, I want all the kids together, but in this situation, may not be possible.
Right. Right. We all want them together. Yes. So Haley, is it, are those some good ideas? Were you planning on having those on your matrix?
Yeah, definitely. Um, okay. Yeah. And one of the lines certainly will be the financial, you know, implications, um, of each option and staffing and all that stuff.
Okay. Great. That, that'd be great. Good information. Okay. Um, so we'll move on to our next discussion item if, if everyone's ready. We were going to talk about the Ilesford teacher's apartment. And that's been empty, I believe. Haley Estabrook has moved off island. And we've had a couple of people asking if they could rent it for the summer. So, um, I just wanted to, I mean, it had, I wanted to discuss it because we, we looked at Haley's, um, teaching principal proposal last, at the last meeting. Did we approve that? I think.
Um, uh, my recollection is that you, uh, I don't know if you voted. I can check the minutes. But I, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the school committee received that positively. Oh, Haley's got her hand up. I think, I think we had the green light.
Yeah. So we, um, it was received positively, but we wanted to speak with Darlene and make sure that she had had a chance to answer any questions. Um, and we have not done that. So we weren't going to move forward until all board members had had a chance to weigh in.
I would suggest Haley, you and Darlene should have a conversation just to make sure. We don't need a vote. But certainly I would just say that, uh, after you guys, uh, if she's comfortable and stuff, then, then it can move forward. I don't think you need to vote on that unless the board asks questions.
Okay. It seems to fit well into our budget and not be a problem. So. Okay. So the, the teacher's apartment, do we need to do, can we go ahead and do a rental to a non-teacher?
I, I would, I would recommend that, um, certainly it's a source of revenue. And certainly, um, if, if it's vacant, um, and we have the ability to rent it, I think, I think you should. Haley did a nice job coming up with a, a short, a lease agreement, which, you know, creates some, um, some understandings and expectations. And I think we would want to employ that. The one thing I would encourage the school committee to consider is that this is going to be a short-term lease. Because you want to make sure that you have the availability in the fall. Unless, unless the expectation is you're going to do a long-term lease with somebody and not have that apartment available, should you need it for a teacher. That's your call. That could complicate the process if we do decide to fill that position and we do need a place for them to stay. So what I, I guess what I'd say is that if you have the ability to rent it, um, for the months of June, July and into mid-August, I don't see any reason why you would not do that so long as you put a, an agreement in place. I don't know, Haley, if you feel different.
Um, no, I just shared the draft lease agreement, um, because I don't think Darlene was on the board when we developed that. So she can look that over. It could definitely be modified for a short-term rental. We've done that before. The summer that I came on, we had rented it to someone else before Haley Estabrook moved in. So it's been rented in the summer before. Um, yeah. So I agree with all of that.
So if, um, we don't need, um, uh, again, if, if the board is comfortable with that, we can move forward and, and advertise or rent. But I'd like to make sure that the board would be comfortable with us saying for this, that by the second week of August, that we would need to, to re- retain possession. Unless you feel otherwise.
Well, it seems like we should be able to do, I mean, it's June 19th today. So maybe like two month rental with the, you know, possibility for extending it if we don't need it. But at this point, you know, committing to something, to, or to having it available for two months.
And I like that, Amy. The possibility of extending it is a nice piece because it may work for all parties.
Yeah. Haley?
Do we, do you want me to look back at what, sorry, what rate we used before? Although I think that they had exchanged some work on the apartment or something. So I don't know what rate you wanted to use for the.
Why don't we, why don't we look at that and work with? We should also, for an outside party, the only thing that I, I recall we didn't talk about is, uh, we should consider a security deposit.
Okay. Good idea. Okay. All right. So we'll just expect Haley that she can, you know, send us that, or she shared the document with us and we'll go ahead and move forward with having it available for rent. And anybody interested should contact Haley? Is that correct or the business office?
Um, they can contact, uh, the, yeah, they can contact Haley, but if she's not available, I'll certainly work with anybody that contacts our office. Uh, yeah, that, that's an email. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
And if the board knows of anybody, you know, um, just have, get in touch with, with Haley.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. Okay. Other business is next. Well, we didn't have any action items. So, um, so any other business anybody wanted to bring up? No? All right. So public comment?
We're going to meet, um, we're going to meet during the summer, Amy. So I mean, if anybody has anything, just let us know and we can meet sooner rather than later if you guys have any questions. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Any further public comment? No? Okay. Very good. Future agenda items?
Carrie had her hand up. Sorry.
Carrie?
Does, does Haley know off the top of her head that one question from the public comment from the, the email that I sent about the split between Longfellow Utilities? I know that the, I know she probably doesn't have it off the top of her head, but I do know that it's a fluctuating system. That's, that at least it was, it used to be in the past where the library would pay a little bit more for something in the off-season. And then when the school was in session there, it would, it would revert to some other form, formula. But it's not all things and we have our separate phone systems. We have, um, there's certain systems that are separate, but I think there was like one thing that was shared possibly. I didn't know if Haley knew that number off the top of her head.
I'd have to go back in the minutes and look, I remember talking about it and I know what I think it is, but I don't want to say it wrong. And I also think that maybe we stopped doing the fluctuating rate and maybe because we thought it would be offset. Like, cause our rate is lower anyway, so we just simplify. Sorry, I need to use my teacher eye, evil teacher eye on these two.
I just remember that we, I, I mean, it's, I mean, I hate to say it, but that's one of those business pieces that I, I definitely don't retain probably as quickly as I should because I forget that people ask these questions. But I knew, I knew that at one point there was something shared. But when the renovations happened to the Longfellow, a lot of things did become separated and a lot of things did become kind of, um, sep- separated is the best word. And, um, I, I, I just couldn't remember which ones what it was. Thank you, Haley.
Yes, I, I will look that up and I can email that out to you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so future agenda items, it looks like we will have the, um, transportation, the boating thing. And, um, probably the safe return to school. Mark, you said that's more so going to have, come out in August, the beginning of August?
I'll provide, I'll provide the board, um, an update of the process. Well, I'm not going to just wait until we're, we're done. I mean, the, the, the reason I'm not providing daily updates is the information changes daily. But yeah, I'll have an update for you, uh, at the next meeting.
Okay. So we'll have the safe return update, the lift update and the boating update. Anything else for next meetings, um, agenda items that we can think of? No? Okay. And, um, so the date and time of the next meeting. So the first?
If this, if, uh, if it pleases the board, I'd like to respectfully request that we keep our Friday schedules so that all the other meetings we have. And if you'd like to go, um, in, let me see, it would be July.
July 3rd.
Yeah. If that works for you, um, I mean, I don't, I, I'm certainly available. But it, you know, we can, we can amend it, but we can pencil that in. And if this time works for you, great.
My calendar says that it's the observed holiday for the 4th of July.
So when, then we.
Is that okay though? I mean, it's okay with me. I just.
I'm not going anywhere, but it's up to you guys.
Haley, I mean, you're the ones that are get, like on the job.
I'll be, I'll be available. If Haley's not, you know, we, we could, we'll, we'll work it through either way.
I think she said, okay. So, okay. So let's stick with July 3rd. Friday, 8:00 AM. Does that work well for everyone? Okay. And we'll plan on another Zoom.
Okay.
Very good. Um, and that's it. So.
Thank you.
Ready to adjourn? Does anybody have a motion?
A motion?
Okay. Second, I'll second that. All in favor? I, Carrie, I, Darlene, I. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great day, guys. Good to see you. Thank you.